The public can come and join us, but nobody can speak from the public's head. I am going to make a change to the agenda. In addition to talking about Historic Preservation Board and Historic Littleton Inc., we will also discuss the work plan. So that will be our second agenda item. And then, from the work plan, we'll also add a recommendation of topics we'd like to talk to city council about when we get a steady session or breakfast, whatever, scheduled. So, we have some topics we had last time, but my thought was maybe we might want to change those because time has passed and maybe focus a little bit more. So, okay, so why don't we go ahead and start with our first agenda item is working with HLI. We've had, those of you on the board know that we've had a great relationship with HLI. We've been working together on the awards specifically and on the tours this summer with the Art Walk. Those are two of the projects we've been working on very closely and have been very, very successful. So, Andrea, do you have a document that you wanted to share with us? The document was in the packet, was it? I'm sorry, I didn't print it out. I didn't, all I got in the packet was...
Well, I have an agenda.
I have it up here for you. Okay, all right. And why don't you give, oh, Anne, could you click on this? Oh, we clicked on the wrong thing.
Yeah, she's right, it's hyperlinked.
Oh, no, I didn't click on it. I'm sorry about that.
Why don't you give us a little background on why this document and how it will help staff and, and then you can walk us through it. All right, so, oh, excuse me. I am remiss in not introducing Gail and, sorry, Rick, I didn't know your name. Do you want to go quickly around the, do you want to introduce yourselves and you're with HLI and then we'll quickly go around the room in case you haven't met some of us. Sorry about that.
Well, I'm Gail Keeley. I'm the president of HLI for the last couple of years. Board member on it for a few years before that. On this board from 97 through 2005, three terms. And I've enjoyed all our connection in the past year. I think it's been great that we've been able to get a few more things done together.
I'm also on the board for HLI, but I'm not sure what I'm doing. But anyway, I'm on the board. I've been involved with that board for over 25 years as well. This was created in 1990. And also with Gail, I was on Historic Preservation Board here, the first preservation board for six years. Very involved with creating the historic district, the National Register District, the three surveys of the city and all that stuff. David Sramma?
Why don't you say how long you've been on the board?
Been on the board for, I guess this is my second, going on my second year.
I'm Amy Fisher. This is my first term on the board. I previously was on the museum board.
Mike Price, second term on the board.
Pam Grove, I'm chair, and this is my third term on the board. Kim Field, and this is my first term on the board.
Paul Kastner is my third term on the board.
Dan Miller, second term.
Ted Whitey, first year.
Andrea, I was the Historic Preservation Planner for many years in Chica Haeiras, now I'm back.
Remember when we were working, well, right at the end of, I guess after the ordinance?
Yes, right, I came in 2004.
So it was a while.
Trying to remember is one time ago.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
You guys were there in the beginning.
We were the beginning.
Okay, anything else before we get into kind of some background and kind of run through the document with us?
Ready to do the background if...
Yep, go ahead.
Well, the city felt that there was maybe a need out there to do some coordination with HLI because the two, HBV and HLI, have in fact worked together, as Pam has pointed out, for quite a long time. It's been a great relationship. We thought maybe there was a need to just state who is responsible for what so that we can, each group can plan accordingly to make sure that events go smoothly. And then I think there's also maybe a second reason where we can have an opportunity to look at all of the activities that both groups are engaged in and determine how are we doing? What does the whole program look like sort of for the community and historic preservation between these two groups? And maybe there's, maybe there's room for another activity or, or whatnot, or perhaps there's overlap between the two boards. Now, in working through it, I don't think we necessarily discovered that there was any overlap, but we did create a number of categories here. And this was just kind of a first stab of putting the categories together and what HBV does and what HLI does. And so, we're very open to any discussion on any of these topics and the idea is just to treat this as a work session and see where we go with it.
Andrea, this is the first time this has been proposed. A tight relationship between the Second Century Fund, HLI, and Preservation Board.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming. We talked about it 20 years ago, so...
And I think it had, it was kind of personality driven. Margie was very instrumental, involved with those. Now Mike goes to the board meetings, so it's just kind of evolved over time. It's all been good. I mean, look at all the stuff we've worked on together.
So, would you like to lead us through Pam or start it off?
Okay, so we've done some things together with outreach, Western Welcome, we have a joint booth together. The meet and greet has mainly been us, i.e. Kim. So, I mean, it's not that you couldn't join us if you wanted, but that hasn't, we haven't done that in the past. It's open. Other outreach activities, provide staff with a minimum of, oh, okay, so if we need anything at an outreach activity, staff was asking us that if we, if they create brochures for us, that we just give them some advance notice. And Mike and I met with Andrea to try to figure out what brochures we have. I mean, we may have thousands somewhere, we don't know, and what we need, so we're kind of looking at that. So, thoughts?
So, this is outside of, you know, I was just thinking the first thing that came to my mind in terms, in terms of actual need for a brochure might be the Art Walk. I mean, I know the postcards, they'll be printed up. So you were thinking of something in addition to those postcards that...
Probably not. We did that little one pager, remember that one pager, HLI and HBV?
The one that you had written?
Yeah, this one. And if we want them run off, all staff is asking us is that we don't do it the day before and say, "Can you run off 300, you know, one pagers for us?" So that's all that is. So I mean, I don't know, is there any other outreach events that we might want to put on that list in terms of us working together?
I would throw out at the council meet and greets, which are very well attended, there, people are extremely interested in historic preservation in general, and they oftentimes ask, "How can I get involved?" And we always mention HLI and that it is, you know, a community organization. And it, any, I would absolutely encourage HLI attendance at those in our booths.
I think that's a good idea.
And also, you know...
And we've got brochures too, so for anybody that wants to get involved, we can hand them a brochure with, you know, the information on the website and how they can join and stuff like that.
That's great.
So if you can make sure we get those brochures or they come to staff and/or if you want to send a representative, they're on, they're summer and they start running May?
I think so, and they're great fun. It's great to meet people. People are extremely interested.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, it's not something you guys can just show up with your brochures. I mean, it'd be nice to do a little coordination, but it doesn't have to be.
So when are these, just in the summer?
They start in May, they're about once a month, May through August.
Sounds about right.
And different locations.
Throughout the city.
Yeah, and, yeah, like, one will be in one place. The one I attended is that they had like a horseshoe of different booths, different organizations, and then council, city council members there, and they have free pizza.
Yeah, there's free pizza, ice cream, stuff like that. The fire department's there, there's a jumpy house, and, you know, folks just kind of go around the circle and, and find out about the various city departments and trick or treat basically for all the little goodies that are handed out. And they, they just always have an interest in historic preservation.
Well, that sounds like it'd be a great place for us to be.
Oh, it would. They're great fun and they're super informal.
It's a lot of new people to Littleton show up. It's a good way to tell them about the history and what the community is.
Yes, and throughout the city, which is, I think, important.
And people that want to get in, are interested in historical preservation, it's a little hard to engage with us, you know, or do something for us or volunteer for HBV, but they can definitely get involved with HLI. So good, so I guess we want to keep that. And, and last year we decided not to do the block party. We felt it really wasn't our demographic. People come from so far outside the city and are more looking for entertainment as opposed to education, so we, we opted out not to do that this year. Anything else we want to add to that?
It's a great fit with Western Welcome Week.
Yeah, that, that was great. And Western Welcome is a big vacation time and to get people to be on the booth is always difficult, so if we can pull from both of our groups, that's always helpful.
Do you, do you plan on continuing with Western Welcome Week?
I think so. I mean, we've done it the last several years. We always have a presence in the parade, a bunch of old cars, and board members holding signs about the scavenger hunt, which happens the following month, so it's, it's a convenient way for us to advertise that. So, yeah, I don't see that that, I mean, this, two years ago, we did the booth and the parade. This year, we did the booth, the parade, and the walking tours, the history tours. And we're, we're in that for next year, for sure.
And the next thing was outreach to property owners. As you know, we used to have a list of merit, which went away, but we still want to reach out to the community and to property owners to educate them on landmarking their buildings. And since we're the body that approves that or recommends approval to city council, we felt that that was a natural fit for HLI to kind of work on that. And I, we've worked together on giving, you know, on talking points and things like that. And from what I've understood is that where you know a property owner or somebody at HLI knows a property owner, you might talk to them about that.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about this, what's the best strategy to get a few. And, you know, we feel our, our best technique is to go where we have a connection right now and at least get a few of them under our belt before we do any big reach out. But we, I think, you know, we have enough people that know people that have older buildings that I think we could work some of them that way.
But we can't take the lead, reaching out, that's Historic Preservation Board's role.
Well, but there's that conflict that comes to us?
It's in the, it's not, it's not really a conflict if you structure it properly. The ordinance defines the way to do that, but...
Well, doesn't the ordinance say anybody can nominate somebody?
Right, but it also says the ordinance takes the lead in doing the surveys. And Gail and I have spent a lot of time doing that already. It's not easy for people to do that. We're not willing to jump in and promote that kind of activity in Littleton again after doing it for so many years. So sometimes a structure has, has to be done between both Historic Preservation Board and HLI.
And we have not done it that way.
No.
Personally, I would like to see a, some sort of marketing campaign around it, you know, like a direct mail or something, but that's staff and resources and I don't know that we could get that kind of dedication.
I think developing a strategy, a long-range approach is a way to reinstitute that. I mean, I've been involved with this for 40 years. The word historic preservation raises a lot of emotions. There's other ways to promote it without doing that and, and talking to people, and I think there's a lot of other strategies that can be used.
What, what kinds of strategies?
Approach it from a small business standpoint, approach it from conservation districts, just approach it from, and there's a lot of discussion in the preservation world of how to do this because things have been evolving. If you go to CPI conferences, they talk about this. And there's just a lot of different ways to talk about preserving character without jumping to historic. And I don't know how many people are going to attend a CPI conference this year, but you should be attending at least a couple of the sessions or a day or so so you start learning about what's going on in the rest of the state. But there's a lot of, thing about going to a preservation conference is you can talk to people from other parts of the state and what they're doing in their communities, which would, which would help.
And we get that at saving places like Kim's going to go.
That's CPI.
That's the same thing.
Oh, okay.
That's the same.
And I've been, and many of us have been, I just happen to do. So, let me clarify this. So, HLI is willing to talk to people that they know, but is in terms of really running with that, it's more of a, not, not taking the lead on it?
Yeah, I think what we should do is see how easy it is or how difficult it is to get a few of them designated where we have some sort of connection and see what we learn from that. See if we find out certain things are really appealing to those that designate, and certain things really don't mean anything to them in terms of the benefits of designation. So I think, I think we can learn a fair amount from getting a few done.
And I can't recall exactly, but I just went through the code and it said something to the effect like, "It can be nominated by anybody, but you can't landmark it without the owner's consent." And so I can't go, you know, put an application for your property?
No, you can't.
Not in Littleton.
You can do it for government property.
We can do it in Denver, many other cases, but not, not here.
No, but to have a couple private properties or people willing to go through the process and get the process down so you can explain what the process is to people so it's not so scary and so they know what's required and how easy it'd be to designate their own personal residence, we're probably talking about personal residence, it's not businesses right now, so...
I think that's a really good idea because not only is historic preservation kind of a scary concept when you think about your own home and what that means, and, and also the process is not, you know, is not something that is necessarily intuitive. There, there is a process to it.
It's process oriented.
And I think that it would be a great idea to get some successful case studies, the, you know, best practices, if you will, and especially since these are people that you know and have contacts with, they could become kind of the influence leaders and, and their, their representatives for what this looks like. So I think that's a really...
Yeah, I think the last thing we want to do is make it fearful.
I agree a hundred percent.
And so, if, you know, if a couple positive ones can come through, it might make a completely different path for the future than going out with a mass marketing mailing where everyone gets like, "Oh, what do they make? Designate my property. What will they be saying I can and can't do?"
Well, yeah, that's probably not necessary. I like the idea of a case study or a testimonial, either a piece of paper, something we can put on the website, or something verbal. Like, we had somebody come and landmark their property, their home last year, I can't remember them, and, and the homeowner had died and the wife had carried on and she was very happy to get her. I mean, she would be a great testimonial. And they have these little applications where you can take a video of somebody. It doesn't have to be very expensive or very difficult.
The other thing about that is explaining to people the economic benefits of preservation. It's well documented, if you're a designated property, your property value is going to be higher, anywhere in the United States, basically. Colorado has a report they do every year, the Economic Benefits of Preservation, they had a new, new one come out last year that talks about it. USA News Report just had an article talking about historic districts that have property values 10 to 15% higher than in neighboring neighborhoods just because they're historic. I mean, it's a, it's a fact that preservation increases property values and protects the character. And you just have to get that information out to people. These studies have been going on for 30 years.
Yeah, we got it at the conference last year.
Right, they had it handed over to you.
So, do we want to add something about case studies or testimonials? And is that something that HLI wants to work on or is that going to be HBV?
We talked about a couple people that were interested. I think what would be good, I don't know how many individual properties you have designated besides that one person, individual houses.
That was kind of just stuck in my mind because it was pretty emotional.
I mean, I read over the ordinance from when we wrote it, I wrote what the changes were, and preservation's very process oriented. Get in a couple projects that come through, looking at the process and seeing where the roadblocks or hinges are and streamlining to make it easy for individuals would be really good for the board to do. And then you can tell people what it would exactly take to designate their property so that they would understand the ramifications and how much work has to be done.
I think it's something that, you know, as we get one or two designated, we'll know a lot more about what's, you know, what... a lot more about what's, you know, what really appealed to these property owners and such. And based on that kind of information, I think we can decide what tool would be the best to get the word out at that time. But, you know, I think it's going to be a learning process.
I think that's something we might want to add under HPP and HLI, just designation case studies. It might not be something we get out today, but as you have these discussions, maybe we can decide on the best approach. Okay, let's, I'm, let's add that. Okay, any other discussion on that? The walking tours, they've been so successful. And HL, I mean, both, it's personality-driven, but basically, you and Margie kind of took the bull by the horns this summer, worked with the Art Law Committee, you know, got the signs, did all that. And what we were hoping is that our, since it's kind of all set, and we're just kind of tweaking at this point, that we would provide trainers, but let you run with it, you know, and be the project manager, so to speak.
Trainer, if you mean, people that have given the tours are ready to train new tour guides?
Right, because, and as we, you know, we never have enough tour guides, although hopefully, if we have the headsets, that we can take a bigger tour and not need to divide up like we had to do this year. So, um, yeah, and, and we would have training, like we did last year, for anybody else that wanted to be a trainer.
Be a tour guide.
Uh, be a tour guide. And also, just for everybody, we had a, what I call, lookback meeting after the last tour. And we came up with the idea of making the tours 45 minutes instead of either a half hour or an hour. And you would give it from one side of the street, so you would walk down north or south, and you would point to the other side of the street. So if you're on the north side, you'd talk about Time Hall, but you wouldn't go over there, and that would kind of save some time. And then we could have tours inside the street, and then they would get the whole thing, instead of just north or west.
And instead of our freedom starting every half hour, like this past year was 5:36, 6:37, then we'd go 5, 6, and 7, since each one would be 45 minutes. That would give us 10 minutes to hightail it back from the melting pot back to the courthouse for the next group.
So that's the thought process. So if you're interested in spring, Dan, you could still be a tour guide even though you're not a preservation board.
We'd love to have any of you as tour guides.
Yeah.
I need to do it.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. Oh, yeah.
I would follow the script, though.
The thing about it is, Rick, it's only 45 minutes.
No, I know, I know what it is.
You could talk for two hours!
That's the whole thing, you know, so many people know so much that we have, you know, sort of a baseline, but, you know, I don't know that any of us just actually follow the script.
Nobody follows the script. Antidote, though, is much more.
Yes, and, and like, Dan has a lot of the architectural, Mike had Davis's granddaughter, Fred Davis's granddaughter, so they, you know, give us tours.
And the people on the tours have piped up with some pretty amazing stuff themselves.
However, I, I do think it's important, if you're on a tour, that you know when it starts and when it ends, that we try to stick within the 45 minutes. And that doesn't mean we can't skip buildings, or whatever. Okay, so that'll work with you guys being the lead on that, and then we'll support that.
Yes, for sure.
Historic preservation boards, that's traditionally been, HLI took the lead on that, but we've been very active in helping. Last year, Margie, as our representative, did a lot of working with you guys, and we want to continue to support you in that in any way. And that's, I guess, every other year, so we won't have it this year, we'll have it next year. Anything else on that?
Yeah, so any suggestions for awards would be much appreciated. We're always, it's a challenge to scramble and think, you know, maybe we present these awards to.
Yeah, I think the staff is always available to give you a list of properties that have received certificates of appropriateness and have gone ahead and completed the work. That's easy for us to put together for you, so you have that list.
That's probably something, if, I don't know when you plan to have it, if you have it in May, to give them like, you know, some notice, and they'll pull that together for you, that might be a great place to start. I mean, Bristol Cone, they had a COA, and they got an award this year.
What I would suggest is not just focus on people who formally have done preservation, but we all live in the community, we all live in different parts of the city. As you're driving around, you see someone just restoring their house. I mean, I did that, there's a couple houses in Kayleigh, they weren't interested in designation, but they were restoring the house over a period of years. And we approached them with Historic Preservation Board, I don't know if they got it or not, but if you see someone just doing a good job, it's still preservation, and just coming out of the blue and giving an award, recognizing the effort they're putting in their property, goes a long way for building advocacy within the community. And then, everybody can't be everywhere at one time, but you, you can see what people are doing around, and we know a lot of people are moving into this community, and are paying a whole lot of money for houses now, much more than I pay. And they've got a big stake at it. So I know, I'm always walking around, looking to see what people are doing on their properties.
Well, it just, we thought the COA list would be a nice foundation. It doesn't mean you have to use it.
No.
It's just, we're always scrambling for, trying to find properties that you want to honor. So anything else on that? And the last thing with liaison, we've done that pretty well. Our liaison to you has been Mike. And then, the more projects we've worked together on, we've had meetings with Sonia, Gail, and your team. And I've come to one of your meetings as a backup to Mike, and so I think we'll continue that. Sonia used to come to our meetings a little bit more regularly than she has in the past. We haven't seen her lately.
Just getting old.
Yeah, so if there's somebody else that would like to come?
I'll bring it up, but.
In our place, it's always helpful, and we always have a, we've always had a report from her as part of a staff report, so we'd like to continue to do that, if you want to send somebody. I know, you know, it's, it's a time commitment.
That's okay, volunteer. But one, one issue, we, Gail and I have talked about this in boards, since she became president, and I volunteered to help her. It's an old group, and we need young people on this, on our board. And so if you, if you run into someone who's interested in preservation, or just history, if you can send them our way, so we get them on the boards, we have some old people to do, which would be really good.
You know, that's another reason to attend those council meet and greets. The people that, that we were talking to about, that were interested in history of Littleton, A, they tend to be new Littleton residents, and I talked to more than one who was from just an architectural and historic powerhouse elsewhere in the country, like Chicago, for instance. So they get architecture, they get historic preservation, and they, they appreciate it, and they're young. And I, I think they're, they're out there.
Well, they're coming here because it's historic. I mean, if you don't want historic, go to Highlands Ranch. But people, it is a marketing element that you can find very easily if you're searching for a place to live.
It can be. Not everyone, we found a lot of people that, that discovered downtown after they moved here and thought, "Wow, this is really cool." And they did not specifically move here for that.
Well, they bought their house and didn't realize there was a law.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, you might be a little bit more aggressive in getting phone numbers and contact information following up than just having an HPP person say, "Go contact HLI."
Yeah.
Well, one way to do it is if you talk to someone, send their name to us, and we'll make a cold call.
And I've done that. I had somebody that was interested, I don't know if they, he wanted to get involved in preservation, and I sent him right over to Gail, so.
That's great, that's good.
Anything else that we're missing, or that we want to change on this overview of how we work together?
Well, probably one thing to talk about, not tonight, but just think about in the future, is advocacy and how it can work together. They're quasi-dutish, we're not. That allows some advantages to historic Littleton if we, if we can get more board members.
What, what do you think advocacy would look like? Other, other than what we talked about through?
When you send a, when you, when you give property to the city council for approval, where they're supporting as citizens, that kind of advocacy, from the political side.
Okay.
You can't be political, but we can. I mean, you do have a delicate role, and Gail and I shouldn't understand that, what it all means. But every community has an advocacy group that supports the legislative part of preservation. And they're the ones that are, that are out there and bring another voice to the table. And let, let people know we're making the final decisions, which are usually councils, that there are other people that are interested and support this.
Do you want to add something on advocacy, it's a little nebulous, the way we're talking about it, but maybe something that could come?
It's something that'd be developed.
Yeah, be developed down the road. I mean, what do you think?
Sure, so we could include on here, the two groups, you know, one thing we don't have on here is joint meetings on some sort of a regular basis, whether that's once a year, or whatever it is. And that would be a good opportunity, you know, for people to brainstorm some ideas for advocacy, and then we can work through them.
We're set for January.
Yeah, and I think, that's, we want to talk about that, what our agenda would be for that meeting after we, that's good.
I have a question about that. Just given that advocacy is not the purview of the HPP, it is the purview of the citizens' group, like HLI. So I, I, I don't know, you know, you're the city over there. How appropriate is that for us to add any kind of bullet point that involves advocacy?
Right, we don't really see the HP board as, you know, being appointed by city council as playing that role.
Exactly. So we probably shouldn't mention advocacy.
I would mention the word advocacy.
Or anything like that. Or, you know, even a, a word that means advocacy. But, you know, these, those are two, there's the wall.
Which you're right, we have to work together, but there is that other side.
Yeah, it's not, not our, our role, yeah.
No, you're right.
But I, I do think the idea of joint meetings, at least, if we can do something, maybe once a year, I like that a lot. And that doesn't have to be advocacy.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be advocacy, but it's just understanding each other's roles and working together because we're both in the history business here.
Well, what would be, preservation, not history, this is about building preservation, not history. Having a joint meeting and developing a plan, seeing what your plan is, I mean, we're going to be responding to, what is your plan for the next year or two? So we know what it is, and then how can we support moving towards that plan? What can we do to, talking to people and building up support for what you guys are planning and doing? I mean, the advocacy is just working together. It wouldn't be a formal thing, but if we know where you're going, then we can determine where we're going to go.
Now, let's just confirm, are we set for a joint board meeting in January? So we have our meeting the third Wednesday of the month, and as I understood, it was going to be like shortly after that.
Actually, is it the, the third? No, we do the third, normally, we do the, the third Monday, since that will be the holiday, and then we take the Wednesday after that. So that could be, does anyone have a calendar here?
I have it on my calendar. Oh, it's right here.
Got one up there. So the next HPP meeting will be Wednesday, the 17th. Is that the same? It's also the third Wednesday, yes. Is that the same night as yours?
Is, that's the third Wednesday? That is ours. So that could, I.
You're at night, we meet in the afternoon.
Yeah, we meet in the afternoon, and we didn't have a meeting this month because of our Christmas party, so we do have a lot of stuff on our next month's.
Well, this was our thought, if we're done with this kind of stuff, if we're done with this document for now, let's talk about the meeting. This is what I'd like to throw out, is that we meet here at 6:00, and I don't know, what time are you guys done with your meeting?
Uh, we start at 4:15, we usually get done around 6:00.
And the city has graciously offered us a like dinner, like a sandwich or something. So we could have a sandwich and have a little bit of informal chat before that. And then, sit down to our, and have, at 6:00, we have to start at 6:30, because that's, all boards have to start at 6:30 now. And then go ahead and have our formal meeting.
And on that formal meeting, is, is there a need for our members to be there? I mean, just thinking logistically, that's a long haul for some of them, for 15.
Yeah, I thought we were on separate dates. I kind of wanted the names with the faces and to hear from them.
Could we do it in February, so we don't have, you know, our meetings on the same date?
Well, we have, Wednesday, we have President's Day, which pushes us again.
That could be the same, let's take a look how the calendar pulls out.
It could be the same situation.
19th, yep, it is, so it's the 21st.
So it's, it's, you'd be on the same day as us.
The, it's hard to get another meeting at another time for people's schedule and to post it. And the further we get into spring, the more likely we will have a COA, and we have to, we would have to do that, and we couldn't have a study session. I mean, we can split it up, we can have a regular meeting, then do a study session, vice versa.
We can have double meetings.
I mean, I could too. Let, let me run it by people at our Christmas party in two days, and, you know, see if I can get enough of them that will be willing to, and then I'll just get back to you, and if, if we can, let's do it in January then.
All right, and then, and we would have at least you guys coming for the more formal part of the meeting. And if they wanted to come for, you know, have the sandwich and kind of meet us a little bit, at least make it social, stay for as much as the, of the formal part of the meeting as they would be able to, that would be wonderful. So after your Christmas party, which is what, in two days? Just let us know how many people you think would.
Okay.
So for the agenda, for that meeting?
And that was, you said the 17th of January, right?
Yes. At, it would be started at 6:00, and then the formal starts at 7:00. What you said, Rick, is you'd like to hear what kinds of projects we're working on. And we're going to go through that tonight, if you want to stay and hear that, but you don't have to.
Oh, Gail gave me the ride, I want to walk.
Then I have to.
It's when Gail wants to leave, I'm.
Okay, so you, you can listen to that. That would be something, I, I think, since that's HP business, it's something at this point, you couldn't give, I don't know, can I give input or not?
At a, at the joint meeting?
No, at this meeting, like if they were to stay now, here.
Yes, because they are, you're inviting guests.
Okay, so we are going to go through that today, and we're going to do some work, instead of, I mean, we're going to prioritize and see who wants to work on what. So if you want to stay and do that, you can. Go through these projects, I mean, I, I just kind of wanted the HLI team to kind of formally know what we're working on together and why. Other thoughts about what would be on the agenda besides where we, where we're coordinating together, what we're working on, what you're working on? You know, some of the projects and things that you're working on would be?
Good. Well, some of the things on our immediate burner will be the post office. Mike and I are going to meet on January 8th to get going on that, for the National Register nomination and the local landmark nomination.
I have a question about the Littleton Boulevard corridor study. Are, are y'all doing that? Are you in charge of that?
We're not, that's the city.
That's the city staff.
Because we're not involved in it.
But we will be. We will be. We just organized with, with them, Diane and Mike, to. We just organized with them, Diane and Mike, to give a presentation at the library on January 24th. So we, I just got an email about that today.
Okay, great.
So we are set for them to be one of our, we've got that speaker series at the library there, January 24th.
Help me understand how that works, that it's the city that is sponsoring this and paying for it, is that correct?
The city actually received a grant for this. And so there's, obviously there's administration associated with that. And the city staff handles that and works through various questions that come through in terms of formatting and help in assisting with holder surveys that are needed for the consultants.
Right.
Working through dates, deadlines.
And then the city has been coordinating with HLI to, is that the case?
Not much on that, no.
Well, it's, since the survey's not done, correct me if I'm wrong, the survey isn't done. So when the survey's done, which is close, right?
It's very close, yes.
That's right. Then the city wants us to make some recommendations. What do we do to preserve some of these buildings there? Are we talking about what they call mosaic, or little districts? Are we encouraging property owners to landmark? What does it look like? So I think they want input from us, which is one of the things on our...
Yes.
It's just it really hasn't come to the forefront because the survey's not done yet.
Okay, well, I just, I didn't understand why HLI was the one organizing it.
We just do speakers bureau in association with the museum. Nine presentations a year at the museum. We find the speakers for probably six of them, they find the speakers for about three of them.
Okay, I was just trying to understand what the relationship to this is.
Yes, yes. Now, once the survey is done, you know, like in July, the city staff will also be working on outreach with the survey being done. And we have nothing planned specifically at this point, but we are, of course, looking for recommendations from the board. As part of the survey, the consultant will also make some recommendations about next steps. So we'll have those to take a look at as well. And we've tossed around the idea of how do we reach property owners, you know? As a starter, we would take each survey and mail it to the property owner for each property that's included in the survey. We've also talked about doing one of the city videos for Channel 8 to get the word out. And that's as far as we've gotten, but that will be a component of the staff, each staff's historic preservation work plan this spring.
That's where we can help too. I've talked to Diane a little bit about the survey. Colorado Preservation Inc. listed as endangered places a few years ago. That video, I think you still have it on my computer. Everybody in the, people in the preservation community in the state of Colorado understand the significance of Littleton Boulevard. And I've been pushing it for 30 years, I've lived down the street. Architectural, the architectural style changes as you move up the street decade by decade on Littleton Boulevard. There's only one or two buildings from each decade, but they show the decade and the style of architecture. 70s decade right near my house, that's not the best decade, but, you know. When we went to school, that's the decade we were in, but, but anyway, it's a big deal, the properties that are in Littleton Boulevard. So here's a way to reach out to some of the property owners that have these significant buildings.
You know, the other thought I have too is some of the really great ones, I'm sure Sonia could do an article on the Littleton Independent. And I think it would be a neat idea to maybe have a focus on, you know, let's focus on Littleton Boulevard. Every week or every other, we put in a picture and a little blip about one of the great buildings there.
It's a great idea.
Get some people just...
Well, should we put that, because education is kind of your focus, is that something we want to put on here? You know, little...
Yeah, because I think, I mean, I know Sonia would write those articles. So I think, yes, we can put that down.
Let's put that on there. I don't know what it's going to look like, but I see you as, education and us as, you know, back with the strategy.
If in that study, they, you know, point out the merits of, you know, 10 or 15 really great buildings, what a nice little series that could be in the paper. Let's focus on Littleton Boulevard.
And educate people on Littleton about what those buildings are.
I think that's the key. And one of the reasons I'm very interested in that is I see it as a huge opportunity to just have the conversation in Littleton about preservation and the historic nature of, you know, our community resources. And I would say, you know, Littleton Boulevard is kind of not on the radar screen of 99.9% of Littleton. They drive down it, and that's it. And it's just, you know, this is, this is a cool thing that's being done. A historic survey that really shows, you know, what Littleton Boulevard is and what it represents. And there is a tremendous opportunity to, I think, work together and really plan something that gets this word out to the community. Because it's just, nobody knows about it. Like there's, I could probably count on my hands and maybe feet with membership of HLI, the people that even know about this. This is just not on the radar screen, and I'd like to see it on the radar screen.
And I also think there'd be a lot of people in Littleton who, once they read the story of some of these buildings and why they had architectural significance, would say, oh, well, that makes sense, and I never knew that, and it's that kind of neat.
And beyond Littleton also, because Littleton is kind of de facto downtown for a lot of the communities around this area. And it can just elevate, I think, our profile a little bit. I think that would be good.
It's the way the city expanded in the 50s and 60s, so Littleton Boulevard. Diane probably would not be recommending the district. I was talking to her about that because there's just not enough there, like there's a bunch of individual buildings. But some of the people that'll be willing to designate their buildings right off the bat. No one's come to the meetings that she's had, but, or a couple of people. But if we find a couple property owners that are willing to designate, just do it. That could be really good. I think one of them would be Drink Wine Marchory.
And Andrea, you said you're going to give copies of the surveys to the property owners?
Yes.
Which I think, you know, just in my experience in doing surveys, when people get to read some detailed stuff about their building, they get excited about it. So I think that could get a lot of properties, property owners, more interested in maybe doing something.
That's been my experience as well.
People don't know the history of your property. I mean, Woodlawn Shopping Center, Diane told me some things about Woodlawn Shopping Center. When I went back and looked at it, I was like, wow. There's a lot of integrity in the corner by where the Sherwin-Williams is, that's the only place there's integrity. But that back area, when you walk back, that little garden area was so unique to Woodlawn Shopping Center.
Maybe a tour in the future.
So, yeah, people do like that. There's some really big buildings. I mean, one of the two remaining IHOP buildings in the state, original IHOP buildings is on Littleton Boulevard.
We approached that owner at that point in time, I don't know if it's changed, not a happy camper.
Oh, it's a building there, it's okay.
All right, so for our, for our joint meeting, we're going to talk about the work plan to the greater group. We're going to talk about HLI projects, your speaking engagements and whatever, and then we'll talk about joint projects and get input from the group.
Okay, so it'll basically just be HLI talking about their projects, you guys talking about yours, and then...
Things we do together. And it's more to be an awareness, like, an awareness of the kinds of things that you do and what we do and how we can, you know. We didn't realize that you're looking for new board members, now we know.
We have a lot of history on the board.
Yeah, yeah, right, but he wants some, maybe some new ideas or something.
We need young people.
Yeah.
And, I mean, not even necessarily on the board, just, you know, maybe the head up a project or something.
To be members. And like what we brainstormed, where we can work together on the Littleton Corridor. I mean, that is extremely valuable. So get back to us in terms of if other people want to come, because that meeting will look different if you don't have a lot of members coming. And if you stay for the work plan tonight, and you're the only ones attending in January, then maybe the meeting looks a little different, you know what I mean? So let us know. We'll figure it out, and Andrea will put together an agenda.
I'll talk it up on Wednesday.
Anything else that we want to address as this portion before we get into our work plan?
We have a plaque spam.
Okay, this was an idea. Do you want to talk about it, Mike?
Well, I could. You know, we've talked a little bit about the plaque designations for some of the landmark buildings. I mean, there's a number of them already on buildings downtown, and we're just trying to figure out the best way for HLI and HPP to work together to, or if we do that, to design in order to post the plaques on the buildings. I know that you guys have some funds, and I don't know if we do here.
We're trying to get some. It's been a project that we've been interested in, and it keeps getting pushed down. And there's issues around plaques, there's money for them. What do they look like? Are they uniform? What is on there? Is there a history? Who puts them up? Who maintains them? So there's a lot of issues. We looked into it a couple of years ago, and it keeps falling by the wayside. So I don't know if that's something that your group might be interested in? More spearheading? In other words, where you would spearhead and we would provide support, only because we haven't been able to allocate resources to it?
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of resources. I mean, we have minimal resources. I mean, we can do a few things like buy the microphones and that, but I don't think we would have the resources to buy a lot of plaques.
We're going to try one of the suggestions that we ask council for a small budget. I don't know if they'll go for it or not. But to do some of the legwork, do you think there might be somebody interested in doing that? In other words, here's the plaque, here's the vendor, here's how much you're going to cost, here's what's going to be on here, here's the criteria. You know, it just requires more legwork initially.
Yeah, the exist, most outside plaques have small amount of text. We, back when Rick and I were on the board, we did a project that was a history of every building on Main Street that we did in a framed 11 by 14 photograph framed thing that people could put, we wanted them to put it in their window space so that, you know, somebody walking by could see a picture of the building and read some of its history. But it, you know, we got them all out, we got them all delivered. They were out there at the beginning, but then things like other merchandise that needed the space were, you know, they are in business more than our sign. Anyway, they all kind of fizzled down, and, you know, they didn't last very long.
I think they lasted a while.
Some of them lasted.
Well, is that something that you would want to get involved in, or do you want to talk to them?
So what I was just going to say is, that's the kind of information you probably would have inside. But on the outside, you generally just have something like, you know, local, local Littleton landmark, 2640 West Main Street, former blah 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 building, Batleit Building.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it just requires time. And a little bit of money to buy the plaques.
The way to do it would be to do an internet search on how people display buildings. When I tour, that's what I do, and I look at all these different things. But one group that is always behind these plaques is Rotary. And they may be somewhat too approached.
What we need is somebody to take that on. And if it's not you and it falls back to us, unfortunately, it keeps getting pushed down to the bottom. We need just somebody to do some of the legwork. And I've been in Telluride and taking pictures and saying, God, aren't these cute and crest viewed? Aren't these great? Why can't we have these?
And I'll put it on our upcoming agenda in January.
Is there an appetite for plaques on the buildings with the building owners? Is anybody clamoring for this?
We haven't, we don't normally get too many requests for it. I will say that along Main Street, we have given plaques to those buildings that have individual landmark designation, but not necessarily those that are in the district. Another issue is that there isn't always room on the building to put a plaque. That's actually a pretty big issue on our Main Street. And so we do have a few extra, I think we have two more plaques that we can give out if we find a place where they are needed. We might look at other alternatives. For example, maybe there would be some sort of a larger plaque that can tell the story of downtown. And if we could find a location where that would be visible and out of the, both visible but out of the way.
That's what, is it Black Hall or Central City?
Like a free standing sign about the history of Littleton.
Yeah, like you stay around, yeah.
Yeah, versus, you know, this is the Stewart Building.
Central City, it's Central City that has those lists of like six buildings and the history. Now, when we tried to do it before, the merchants wanted to have more of something, signs about the merchants rather than history, so that was a challenge. But we just need somebody to look into it and make a recommendation, we should put the plaques here, here's some of the issues, just to do some legwork. And I don't know if anybody on your group would be interested or not.
I'll put it on the January agenda.
Find out and see if that's something. If not, it'll land back with us and probably won't get done, unfortunately.
Well, I have agreed, remember?
Yes, you have.
I have agreed to in the next month or so to go out and find, look at all of our landmark buildings in the community and see where we may be missing any plaques. Have that done.
So, yeah.
Give us a much better baseline then of what's needed.
Yes, yes. And I'll also just throw out that many of you may know that the state income tax credit for historic rehabilitations, there is an application fee associated with that. And per the state statute, the city must put that into a fund only for historic preservation activities. Over the years, we haven't had very many applications, so we haven't generated a lot of money for this. But the last time we were able to buy the plaques was through those application fees, and I think we had about $1,200 in there. And the city staff is interested in looking to promote that program more. I mean, everything is good about it, we get more preservation out of it, and we also, a portion of that credit comes to the city for us to spend on our programs as the city decides. So plaques could be, or one singular plaque could potentially be a project that's funded by that in the future. So we don't, we have no funds right now, but we're looking to get some.
I don't know how you raise money, we can't raise money, but if we did a historical house tour or something and raised some money, I mean, I'm just making up something. If there's a way to do a fundraiser for a specific thing like plaques, if we can't get budget, this would be down the road. I mean, we have to decide if we're going to do it, what it looks like, all that stuff.
Historic downtown Littleton merchants would have some interest. It's tied to marketing, not preservation, but to marketing, then it flies better.
And maybe it's, we go to Hoodlum or the Littleton, the new Littleton business chamber and get feedback, or ask them, or suggest to them, or something. So there may be some outreach that we work together on. Somebody just needs to take the lead on it. Anything else? So we want to add to our joint projects, Littleton Corridor, maybe, right? As we work together on that, on our document.
On our document, yes.
And then on plaques, right now it's under HPP and HLI on our work plan. We'll see when Gail gets back to us what, how HLI wants to participate. Anything else about HLI before we get to our work plan? Thank you.
How many people are going to the Saving Places Conference? Early registration answers.
We have one or two, anybody else here? Let's see your head.
When does it start?
When does it start?
It's 23rd.
Is anybody from your group going? Is anybody from your group?
I go all the time, but...
You go, anybody else?
Everybody's going to the award that, Wednesday night, I'll look for a ride home if you're driving. I take the train.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could all carpool on our t-
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, we could all carpool on our TD.
On TD.
That's what we did. We actually went on, uh, down to get, anything else? All right, then, thank you. You're welcome to stay. If you want to leave, we'll get them. All right, so what our task will be is to go through the work plan and I think we know most of it. We want some discussion, add some points. We want to add priority, low, medium, and high. And also, if there's a project that you're passionate about, we would like you to take the lead because if we don't have somebody to take the lead, we may not be able to do the project, which is, or it just may be a project for next year or some future time. And that's fine. This is kind of a wish list. Um, starting?
Pam, I thought maybe now would be a good time. I just made a quick little list of some of the accomplishments in 2017 before we start looking at 2018. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Board reviewed seven certificates of appropriateness, five grant applications. We are now embarking on a project to update the downtown design standards and guidelines and Mike Price is the HPP representative on that. We actually just got started today. And then, of course, the HPP is engaged in walking tours and outreach at Western Welcome Week and the Eat, Meet, and Greets. Eat, Meet, and Greets.
Also, the awards banquet?
Did the awards banquet, there was participation.
It was not banquet, the awards ceremony.
Ceremony. Participation from HPP on that as well. So I think that was some good accomplishments there.
I agree. Okay? Anything else? Okay. So in terms of the Main Street District, starting at number one and they're numbered one through 17, some of them will go quicker than others. We've, over the past five to six years, we've tried to convince some of the property owners that aren't in the district to come into the district and I think we've gotten everybody that we think will join. So one of the thought was to move to an all-inclusive district and this is something Mike and I've been working on. So I propose that we make that a high priority and probably it's something that Mike and I've been working on unless somebody really wants to jump on the gun. And if we meet, unfortunately, we can't meet with three people without posting.
Yes, I'd like to just point out with respect to having a project that would, that where council would put together, ask staff to put together an ordinance to get every property owner on Main Street into the district. There is a large staff component to that for outreach and preparation of documents and staff reports. And also, we would need to get direction from council that that's what they want. Now, we do have an upcoming breakfast meeting this year. We don't have a date yet and we will, just later this week, Chair and Vice Chair and staff will be meeting with city attorney and some others to look at what are the city protocols and the HPP has some ideas of things that you would like to get done and how can we do that or what is the way to do it or what is appropriate to ask for from, from a board that is appointed by council. So I think we're just maybe a little bit on hold with that project until we have that meeting.
Right, we, we also, as you know, part of our preview, is the right word? Part of our responsibility, as outlined in the code, is to make recommendations to council about things that are in our arena of what we're supposed to be looking at. So we're gonna meet with staff to figure out, how do we get this, how do we bubble this up in the appropriate way? You know?
There are a lot of protocols in the city, as you, as I'm sure you all know as a public, you know?
So, so we're working on that and Mike and I have been working with Andrea and team on that. So that's in process. Hopefully it's something we can bring to council at our breakfast meeting and/or study session if that's what they decide, so.
Okay, so I think perhaps just it might be, is appropriate to put for this item number one on hold momentarily? If you want, board members, members are okay with that?
It sounds like it's a work in progress if you guys are meeting and.
I don't know if it's on hold because we, we are moving forward in steps. I mean, it's not.
Just ongoing.
Yeah, just ongoing.
It's what?
Just ongoing.
Ongoing, okay.
I mean, but I, it's high priority for us, but it's part of ongoing if you want to use that word. Okay, number two is identify key properties and share historical significance with owners. That's number two. That's a little bit what we're doing with like the Littleton Corridor and what HLI is doing, although that's not part of what HLI, is there more to it than that?
A little bit more, Pam. They, I think we encouraged each other to, if we see properties that might be good candidates for landmarking, we could let them know that this might be a good candidate and then let HLI run with it.
Them being the property owner?
Yeah, if we, if we see a property that might be even a warm body or even a cold one.
Sure.
Then we would notify HLI or you can let me know or Pam know and that I could be, since I'm a liaison with HLI, I could let them know at their board meeting that here's a property that probably you want to take a look at for landmarking because it's historically significant. Just, and that's just as you're cruising around town.
Sure.
Nothing, any, not really anything formal, right Andrea?
Okay, so I'm gonna put, for point person, that's really all of us, is just kind of have that in the back of your mind. And should we say that is ongoing or do we want to say it's low priority, medium priority? What?
It's ongoing.
Ongoing, okay. And then the Littleton Boulevard Corridor, we talked about that and I think we'll have more when the survey's done and I liked the ideas that we heard from HLI about working together. So do we want to make that low, medium, or high or? I'd like to do some low, medium, and high so we know what's really important.
It sounds like, so you're gonna get information here from the survey and then, and then try to decide what the next steps are. So it seems to me that there's, as soon as you understand the next steps, that we ought to.
Then it becomes a higher priority.
It's a higher priority. Or, yeah, I mean, yeah.
But then as of this moment, it's not because we don't have the survey.
So you might get marching orders from that survey and, yeah, I think it'd be higher priority to.
Okay, so let's put that high because staff is gonna look to us to get, give input and we may draw on HLI.
Yeah, I think that should definitely be high and I'd be interested in kind of moving that ball forward.
Wonderful. All right, I'll put your name in there. Downtown Design Guidelines, that's pretty much Mike. He's been tapped for that. Is that high, medium, or low? I know it's high for staff, but for us, or should we put it?
Say it's medium for us. And so we're meeting, we met today, we'll meet in January and I think we made a lot of progress already. You know, there's been a lot of background work that was done. So the current downtown guidelines are 468 pages.
Oh, yeah.
Is that right? And the consultant we were working with today had already done a condensation of that and got it from 468 to about 85 or so, something like that, so.
Oh, that's so much better.
It's a way of consolidating all of this information into one place as opposed to having eight different sub areas. So I think it's a, it's a good project.
And just keep us posted as we, you know, over time, as we go along, as you go to the meetings?
Okay. Is there anybody else that, does it make sense to have more than one person or? Yeah, do you need backup on that? If anybody else wants to come, it's, we meet, I think one o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, we, we kind of have our group at this point and maybe a backup would be the way to go.
David, would you?
Anybody want to volunteer?
Yeah.
I'll say David.
Good.
Yeah.
I'll send you the information that I get, David, until you can start. Just kind of follow along. Yeah.
That would be good because you may need somebody with the skills, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so shall we talk about medium? Is that what we're doing?
Medium. And then put David's background. And number five, normalize the relationship with HLI, HPP. Is that sort of done? Number five, I mean, did we just do that here today?
Or are you gonna hear more if you have a meeting in January 17th? Is that gonna?
Change things? I'd say it's started, but I don't know that. And it does seem like they've, they're taking a number of issues back to their group.
So, so we'll say, so it's not done, so we want to say high, medium, low?
I'd say it's a, it's a short-term achievable things.
Yeah.
High?
High because we're working on it now?
And eventually, the staff will put it into some sort of formal written statement that we'll all have.
Yeah, we had some additions today and then January we may have some more. And it's probably a living, breathing document as things come up. I mean, like the Littleton Corridor thing came up and that may evolve or there may be something else that evolves. Okay, number six, identifying the structures for designation. Isn't that ongoing? I mean, we've already started that, it's in process, but we want to keep it in the forefront.
Yeah, it's like, how is that different than number two? I think its placement here is good. I think they're, they're basically the same thing, but recognizing that we, that HLI is also doing it and we just need to coordinate. Am I interpreting that right?
Um, who's the point person on that?
And the city ditch, is that, is that a question? I know HLI is actively working on the post office.
I just threw that in there.
Ah.
I mean, just things that we hadn't thought of, you know, the city ditch you don't think of as a building, but is that something we want to designate?
Well, it's a huge historical part of Littleton, you know, it's, it's one of the driving forces in Littleton. That was an important thing. And the city obviously recognizes that they, they did the, the trail along the city ditch and I think, yeah, that's a great idea. What interesting is, is that the city of Englewood owns the water rights in the ditch.
Oh, really?
They would be a player in any conversation on that as well.
Have they ever mentioned it or have they?
Yeah, they're not too interested in designation, they're just interested in their water. But that was, you know, that was years ago.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
If Highland Canal has a conservancy, why can't the city ditch have some kind of designation?
I know. And ditches, that was a big deal. In the 19th century, they were like the dot coms, you know?
Interesting.
Ditch shares. I remember doing escrow closing years and years and years, early in my career and, you know, having to transfer ditch shares and that, that was important and you had to get that right.
Still do.
Oh, yeah. Well, do we need a point person for that since that's kind of?
It seems like everybody is all.
All, all, okay. And then for the plaques, that's still open based on our conversation, so I'm gonna put that as low. What do you think?
Agreed.
Did we ever get pricing for that? For the plaques?
We never got that.
So you know we have an engraver downtown Littleton?
Yes.
Like, I was kind of talking to him at the Hoodlum meeting.
Uh-huh.
And he's like, man, do you guys ever want us to help you out with the plaques?
Well, engraver in downtown, cause I, I think of the trophy guy in Broadway.
He does headstones and all kinds of other things.
What's his name? What's his name?
Matt Frye.
So the graveyard, or the headstone guy that's down the.
Yeah, he's a young guy, he's like in charge of memberships at Hoodlum or something like that.
What's his company name?
Something Monuments?
Yeah, Something Monuments.
Do you know, are you familiar with it?
I'm familiar with the business, but I, yeah, it's spoken. It's the one just north of Main Street, right?
Yeah, it's like everybody knows where it is.
Ranky Brothers on the.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
But he would love.
Is it on Main Street?
No.
No, it's north.
It's north of Main Street.
On Evanna, that's right.
I didn't realize he did anything other than.
Oh, yeah, no, they do plaques.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah, they do all kinds of cool stuff. Got the nickel die tour, but I mean, if that's, I'm happy to talk to him about it if it's, if we want to try to at least get pricing or something. He'd love to do that, I'm sure.
Do you want to coordinate with Andrea on that because she has a sample, like we could actually take a sample in and say how much would it cost for this, right?
Sure.
And we want, we want a friends and family discount.
Yeah, you bet we do. I'm gonna put you, he's the point person, at least to get it started.
Yeah, sure.
That would be lovely and if you just want to go grab a plaque from Andrea or have her bring it at the next meeting and then.
Good.
Can the grant money be used to buy the plaques?
That's a good point. We've been talking about this grant money.
Grant money that doesn't get spent because of the plaques.
Right. In fact, let's jump down to 12 because you bring it up.
Raise all benefit to the districts.
When we passed out projects to talk about to city council when we thought we were gonna have a meeting in the fall, Mike did some work on that. And do you want to kind of, you know, talk about your thought process and what you got ready for that meeting and what you came up with and what you're thinking?
What I did was I looked back about five years to see what the grant applications were, the dollar amount versus how much was available. And then what the utilization was actually. So if we had $50,000, we awarded $50,000, but how much was actually spent? And in many cases, that money went begging, you know, there was $15,000 one year, $20,000 another year. And the, the general reason was, well, we can't get the contractors to act. So one of the thoughts that we had was if we have eligible applicants who we've had to turn down just because we don't have enough money, could we then contact those folks after there's been a period of time for the original applicant who, or the original grantee who has gone, who either has gone through or not gone through the COA process with us and gotten that building permit by a date certain. So if they haven't followed through with their timing, then could we go back and say, okay, applicant number two, you, we would like to award you that funds, those funds if you're still interested. And then on top of that call, if we had extra money that didn't ultimately get used, they do want to spend it, I think, don't they, Andrea? Why couldn't we use it for things like the plaques or other historic preservation issues? So that, you know, we could get a better utilization of those funds, but.
Cause we thought about going back to city council, saying, can we have $75,000? But once Mike got under the covers and realized that a lot of the monies went unused. So this is something for discussion for the group. Do we want to put some deadlines in the grant program? If a bill, I don't know what the, what the caveat is, if you do not pull a permit within six months of the date that the amount is awarded, you forfeit it. It's not enforced and I don't think it's in there.
Not in the bank, right? They couldn't use the money.
But we didn't have anything in there that said that they had to give it back or they had to do this and then what?
They don't get the money until.
Work has to be performed before they even.
But what happens is, is that money is earmarked and then when they don't use it, it goes back into some general fund that we don't have control over. Or they, they can issue a PO. Let's say they say, we're really gonna start in margins next month. You could issue a PO as I understand it, what Andrea tells me, but then it's specific to that project. So what we want is the money back and give it to somebody who will use it, either through another round of applications or to the people that we couldn't give as much as they asked for.
Could it go back to an HPP fund that either gets used for a plaque project or grant money the following year or the second applicant? However, you know, we can divvy that up.
And that's, that's one of the things we were thinking about.
It's not going to a general fund as.
Let it roll over if whatever wasn't used this year, let it roll over to next year. And if we have a $90,000 applicant of applications for $50,000, then maybe perhaps we can award more in the hopes to actually use it.
But we have to put some bite into it. In other words, you don't get to keep it forever and after and after. Or you don't get to, it's not earmarked to you after a certain amount of time.
Well, that's, part of it's in there is where the funds get directed after that point in time.
So I, I. So, I, I think that's one thing we wanna talk to city council about.
Such a fund doesn't exist right now to roll it over into, is my understanding.
Who makes the decision of where those funds go when they're not used?
City council, and right now, the, the way it works is that we can, we do write POs for many of these grant applications, but it's, as Pam said, it's specifically for the person that, for whom it was awarded. And it's not like the PO can remain open? No.
Right, it's closed after that certain day.
It's a pretty tricky thing. You know, we, there might be more flexibility if we can do it all within the year. So, if the grants were held earlier in the year, and they have, for example, three months to make that first, you know, meet that first deadline, and they were able to do that, we may be able to have another grant round within that same calendar year.
Well, thinking about that, normally, we, what is the process? It's May and June? June and July? June, they present, and July, we decide?
We could, we could move that up.
Could we move that up? So, could we do something where we make March the deadline? I mean, is that too quick? Even though we don't have approval from the city council yet on what the funds do?
March 2018?
Yeah, 2018, and then we talk about it in April and May, and then say, "You have to start by such and such day, by the end of the year, or else you forfeit that money." And then if we can get approval by then, we can turn around and re-award it, with the caveat, "You have now until such and such a day." But we know we can't decide that in March. Let's make the deadline March, we have to just look at that for now.
Could we get the word out quickly enough? 'Cause March is basically three months away.
Exactly.
Yeah, and in fact, I've, I've put together a tentative schedule, and based on last year's, I can see where we can easily move it up one month. Now, if we move it up more than a month to try to get it, instead of awarding in July, to June, to May, that would be, that might be a little bit tight. Because people do have to, you know, they need to get the bids, they need to conceive of their project, and they need to bring in their application to staff for us to review. Many times when those applications come in, they're not ready for presentation to the board.
So, could we move it up one month?
I think one month is very doable.
What do you think? In anticipation of what you're saying, Paul, that we can somehow put a little more bite in this?
Let's assume it all has to happen within a calendar year. I guess I'm still looking at the bigger picture with council. That's fine, it's not to be.
A bigger picture in terms of, if it goes beyond a year?
Being able to reallocate the funds to number two, or to?
Yeah, I wonder how many of those projects that weren't awarded actually moved on to actually getting a building permit and moved down that process? So, if they had that building permit by our deadline, but the one we awarded to didn't, if we were allowed to reallocate it without having to put up the grant again to those individuals. So, I don't know what that statistic looks like, but I would think, you know, more times than not, probably one of the others that didn't get awarded probably still moved on with the project.
I think you're usually pretty honest about how much the grant money influenced that. If I don't get it, I'm not gonna do it right now. If I do get it, I'm gonna do it anyhow. So, if we could do that, and then somehow, in the application, maybe you can come back, is January too soon to come back with some verbiage on the application request, with some more bite to it? Even though we don't have any approval yet of city council, we'll hopefully get it, but just to move it along? And I don't know what's reasonable.
And oftentimes, you have multiple requests, and they don't get the full amount. They're requesting to get three-quarters of it, or you may even read out, you know, just making certain the money actually gets used.
Right. And we, we have the authority to do that. We don't have the authority to say, "We may, yeah, we'll give you more," but, until we talk to council, but? So, there's some, Mike has done a lot of work on that, but Mike has also is, he's got some other things that he's working on. The big one is the design guidelines. So, would somebody else like to be more of the point person, maybe work with Andrea on that process?
What does that look like for you? Is that just, is that a function of you going to city council in one of their study sessions, and introducing this concept to them to give us more flexibility within the? Since we're not asking to go beyond a year, we're just asking for more flexibility with the funds that they already allocate for us.
Well?
I don't mean to play up the spot, but I'm just kinda wondering what that process is.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Find out more?
We'll have to find out more about that, yeah. So, I think for now, it's just really a staff function, to find out what we do.
Yeah, and this is probably more a city attorney question of what they would have, would they have to formalize giving us more latitude over the use of our funds that are already allocated versus? I don't, I mean, 'cause I'm hard-pressed to believe that they would have to pass, like, an ordinance that would change that.
Yes.
It would just be more of a policy change.
Yes. Yes, I agree. I agree with that. And so, specifically, we're looking for, to pass unused grant money to another grant user, but not?
It's already gone through the process.
Not into a fund for plaques or other HP activities.
Or with some sort of approval that we could, if we did have unused funds, that we could use it for an approved project, like plaques.
Or propose it to city council, let them approve it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we've got the money, we can spend it on anything we want. I mean, we understand there'd be approval process. We'll see what we'll fly. Is there anybody else that wants to kind of be point pushing for the grant program?
I'll help with that.
Okay. And Mike has a lot of stuff, and so is? I'm gonna put Ted and Mike. So, these are all ongoing. So, looking at eight through 12, is there anything? I mean, these are just all ongoing projects that we're working on, is there anything?
I think it's just a matter of scheduling, almost like project management.
Right. Is there somebody that wants to be the walking tour point person? Or does anybody wanna take any of these projects as a point person? Maybe, could we do you, Kim, as outreach, 'cause you do the meet and greets? Do you wanna continue with that?
Yeah, I'm happy to, but the city really takes care of everything.
Right, yeah, you just make sure that, I mean, if you can do nothing? You usually go, but if somebody else wants to go, or if you can't go, you could get a, somebody else from the board to attend?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, some, I, I don't always go, sometimes if I'm out of town, you know? But Dennis has always been there, so?
I'm gonna put myself as hoodlum. All I do is put the signup list out. So, that's easy. The Western Welcome Parade, does somebody?
I'll take that.
Okay, Amy? And what that requires, Mike can help you out, to make an application in the spring?
Yeah.
And then coordinate the EZ Up with the city, if we can get that. And then make sure there's people, and people to man the booth, and HLI helps. And make sure we have brochures and things there. And in the past, I think Dan and, was it Ted, went and got the EZ Up from the city, set it up, and then they came back and got it, which is not that easy to do, because you have to go down an hour and a half. You have to afford again?
There's worse jobs than that. It's so hard, it's so hard.
I don't know if they'll be with us after March, but have somebody. All right, somebody. And then the last one was the walking tours?
Didn't I just hear we were trying to encourage HLI to sort of take over that?
I'm gonna put them.
We're gonna advise strangers.
Okay. So, just real briefly, all of these are ongoing, eight through 12. And then for point person, I have walking tours, HLI. Hoodlum is me, because all I do is set down the list of who wants to go when. Western Welcome is Amy. Outreach is Kim. And the grant program is Ted and Mike. Okay, projects 13, 14, 15, these are projects that we've talked about over the course of time. They're not urgent. If somebody has a passion for them, great. If not, we can just kind of put them on the back burner. We had talked about a list of vendors who specialize in historic preservation, like Denver has, because people don't know where to start, and we'd have to have something that doesn't say we recommend them. And you could, you could put out a call and say, "Do you wanna be on this list?" And then there's some sort of disclaimer.
Thought we heard that that list exists somewhere, when we were talking about the wealth and heights. Is that just a Denver? The way we learned that Denver has such a list, is that what we learned?
That list exists, and I think anybody can access it.
And I believe, I, I, I believe it's some historic Denver, and you do need to be a member to access it. But aren't, I know that we were able somehow to access it. Really? Well, maybe it's changed. It was one of the, one of the benefits of membership is how they used to.
Well, so, if somebody would be interested in finding out access to Denver, what we would do and how we would have a call for vendors?
I can do that.
Is that?
I can do that.
Stan, okay?
Oh, I've never heard about them, but that's a good idea.
Another project that we, it's just one of those nice-to-haves, not a must-have, but if we wanted to do a swap with another historic district, kind of learn what they do, learn what we do, maybe we give them a tour, one of the tour guides gives them a tour, and then we have a short chat, maybe we have lunch. We did this once with Arvada, it was really interesting. It's just fun.
Yeah, Arvada is, yeah.
Yeah.
Arvada is very, very good.
It's a Saturday oftentimes that we do this, so we'd be giving up a weekend. And if somebody thinks, this is not something we have to do, but if somebody's interested in doing this and contacting another historic district and setting up a date, that would be great.
Interested in that? Maybe just take it as opportunity presents itself. I know Elizabeth is, the town, is really becoming active in promoting its historic district. And Elizabeth has a kind of cool historic district. And they might, might be interested, because?
That would be fun, yeah.
A different kind of animal.
Do you have a contact there?
I did, and I know that they'll be at Saving Places, so?
So, you say whoever's going to Saving Places, if you touch base with somebody there?
It's not out.
Yeah, so I'm gonna put all, or Saving Places?
Yeah.
Attendees? So, if you find somebody, please get their name and see if they would be interested, and see if we can set something up. And even if you don't have the time to set it up, I mean, maybe I could do it if I have a name and a date, or somebody else could.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'd be a fun thing to do. And believe it or not, Centennial is actually moving towards creating some kind of a, you know, a district on Arapahoe. Which is?
Yeah, it's kind of next to their community building. Well, the main corridor there, near their?
Oh, on the east side? Yes, okay. Okay. I always, I only go like to Arapahoe to I-25.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I try to stay well away from that.
Right, no, it's further, it's further down. They're, they're trying to create more of a sense of place, and they look at us and they drool over what we've got here.
I have a chance.
Southland, Streets of Southland is a little bit of what they look to, but it's, yeah.
But they're, they're going way, way out there instead of, they've got a challenge, definitely.
Yes. The number 15 is an alley project. This is something that Sharon Gar kind of worked on, and we do have a presentation where she looked at the alleys and what they did it in, Fort Collins, and they kind of looked at our alleys. And now we've progressed. The View House utilizes their alleys, the Alley uses their alleys, Jakes has a beer garden. Where Spurs is would be ideal for a mural. So, maybe it's working with the Fine Arts Committee to get a mural, maybe it's an awareness program? If, this is something that anybody's interested in, just kind of looking at. I've got the presentation Sharon has. What is the next step? That's?
Well, did I, are, because aren't they, it sounds like we're talking about making it a design standard. Does that sort of feather into what Mike and Dave were working on? It's not, I don't see it necessarily as a historic preservation thing, but sort of an overall design guideline for the town. I don't know if it's in the, is it in the design standards now, Andrea?
No, it isn't, and I think that's?
That could be added?
Yes.
Good thought, then.
I'm gonna put you in terms of design guidelines.
Well, I think he's just mentioning it to, it makes sense if you're meeting with a group or something.
Yeah. And there's the main street area of downtown that I think that could be incorporated. If there's going to be murals, here's how they should be presented.
Or maybe it's, like, the Spur utilizes that space for?
It's a lot of them, yeah.
Tables?
Right, right along the alley, right there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's more that could be done, I don't know.
And already, staff has, now when we speak with applicants about getting their certificate of appropriateness and talking about their project, we talk about the alley. Truly activating an alley and getting an alley culture going, I mean, we're right for that, because that alley, you know, it goes, what, four blocks? That, that one particular alley? And I, I mean, it's, there's so much possibility there. And there are communities, Arvada, again, did a lot of work about kind of, quote, beautifying and lighting their alleys and making them actually inviting places. And Fort Collins, of course, is a great example of that. And, and I, I think, you know, it should be incorporated into those design standards, because again, it's a tremendous opportunity, and it would be an opportunity lost if it were just, you know, business as usual in the alleys.
So, it's, it's not something that's a main thrust of what we do, it's just, it doesn't fall anyplace else that we're into determining the character of downtown Littleton's part of it. So, Mike will do the design guidelines. Anybody interested in looking at that from, what do we do with it? How do we get other groups on board?
Well, that's rough. I guess with, with the group, the consultant that's doing the design guidelines now, is that, would that be their? If somebody advises them that we wanna include alleys, do they, will they do that? Like, of trying to figure out, make some special of how to?
Yes, so, the design guidelines update is in two parts right now. And what we started on today was working through some housekeeping issues, and turning guidelines into standards, and figuring out what to do with the objectives. In other words, we didn't have so many standards, we need a lot of guidelines, which you didn't have to follow. And so, it's gonna take a certain amount of work to work with that. And I think part two is gonna be more about the actual design and changing the standards. And that would be the opportunity. So, it's not just the consultants, it's the group of us that are working together that bring forth ideas and work through them. And then the, the final product would go to front of HPB for recommendation to the planning commission for approval.
So, we need to advise on language for, if we wanna do something with alleys? Is that what?
Well, they, they can provide the language, we provide the ideas. Yeah. And the ideas, there are a lot of ideas out there. And, and I think, are you going to Saving Places?
No.
You're not?
Paul is.
Oh, Paul, you are going. I'm sure that will be on the agenda, because there are so many incredible things that are being done with alleys. And, you know, it's, it's, it requires a little bit of thought, because A, they're working alleys, you know, people are using those to service their businesses. And B, you know, there are, if you're gonna activate an alley and kind of bring it into, you know, how you use your community, you have to think about safety issues and all kinds of things like that. And there's, there's a lot involved in it, but it's, you know, it's, it just basically dullens your downtown in a lot of ways. And I'm sure it will be talked about at the conference. The conference is at the end of January, so would there be time to kind of find some best practices and learn some things at the conference and bring them back to incorporate?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be a good idea, good learnings. Even in Kansas City, they're doing stuff with alleys.
The Westport has a lot of.
It's vertical places, yeah. And they're having problems with the, you know, the alleys in Fort Collins. I mean, they're running into some of the issues, like, you know, drugs and things like that. that. And obviously in Denver, they're taking quite a different approach to where they're using their alleys. But yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that the suggestion is that we take any information we learn from Saving Places, funnel it through Mike, and use the design guidelines as suggested ideas for property owners. So that's our kind of our strategy in the short run, whether we carry it to another level in the picture.
Yeah, we'll talk about it later. And see what we find and actively seek out information. We go to the conference. And then, you know, at some point, we should talk to the businesses that are out there and see what some of their ideas are for activating alleys. I mean, Spurs done a lot to activate their alley without any input from anybody from us, so.
So those that are going to Saving Places are going to look for alley information and it may just be a consultant or something you can find out about later and also for tour swaps. So just keep that.
So we're going to hang out in the alley?
Hang out in the alley. Some other staff projects is maybe getting a student or an intern that's kind of to work on some of these projects. And when they update the website, that they ask for our input on those sections having to do with historic preservation. And you'll just need to let us know when that happens. So those are probably, the intern's probably low and the other one's ongoing. I do have, excuse me, back to 13 through 15, do we want to, what do we want to put for the different projects? So 13 was the list of builders. High, medium, or low?
Medium.
Medium?
Oh.
Education meeting with other tourist drops, I'm going to put that low. And work on alleys, high, medium, low?
Right. Medium and not low only because we've been approached already.
Right, and it's a little more current because of what's going on.
What's the timeframe for the design standards because it might be high? I think we've got a couple more meetings, one in January and then one in February, and I think we should have a draft ready to go by March. Andrea, is that right?
That's about right, yeah.
Yeah. So by the end of January... Is there a consultant? There will be time. Is there a consultant that would write those standards? I mean, it's not something... No, it's not anything.
So again, I think this first part is really more about the housekeeping issues and also getting guidelines into standards, guidelines already added to standards. Part two is going to be more focused on actual changes to the design standards to get such things as alleys as we want, and there may be other issues as well. Andrea, when you say housekeeping, what does that mean?
Yes.
Well, for example, the design guidelines were put together quite a long time ago, I think 2005 or so. And it refers to a body, a city body called the DRC that no longer exists. We used to have something called the TIZ, Transportation Impact Zone. And that was a half mile around the two transit stops where there were specific requirements. And that no longer exists. So it's all sorts of things that just need to be updated in terms of process and groups and that sort of thing. Also, there is, there's some maps in there that aren't really up to standards that we now expect with the GIS that the city now has. So this is, that housekeeping and kind of process is Q1, would you say, quarter one of 2018? Yeah, flowing into quarter two a bit. Okay, so, you know, the alley information is not urgent at this point, so.
So then, what do you, instead of saying hi, do you want to say he?
Sure, I think so.
All right, the last thing we want to do is...
Sorry to have that.
We had, and we don't know when we're going to meet with council, we don't know what the protocol is, but doing that, this is a study session for our, we had a long list of topics that we were going to discuss. And I've given this some thought and what I proposed to the group is that we not do...
No, that's... Paul, I'd like this pitch too.
Thank you, Paul. Before we go to this, 18 brochures. Can we get that? We were looking at all these brochures that we have and trying to consolidate them. And those brochures are... How to Landmark, Historic Walking Tour of Downtown Littleton. Community Guide, the one for owners to get them to join the district. And then there's that one pager, you know, the one pager. So you are going to find out, Andrea, where we were with this and also look at the brand that's, those of us that are marketers, this is like, you don't have all these different brands. You have what? So...
I don't have numbers yet.
Okay.
But it is on the staff projects list. And as such, we will get to it and see it as important. Nothing else we have to have, brochures, so we don't run out.
Right, and can I put medium only because before we know it, it's going to be May and we're going to... Brochures for tours and the meet and greet.
Well, here's what I think, I think for the staff projects that the staff can put down based on workload.
Okay.
That we can put down what our priorities are, how we can fit it into our work plan.
We had talked about entry signs for Arvada. And that gets stalled out all the time, right?
Can we discuss, are we talking about, now, there is one entry sign, is that right, Paul? It's already there. Are we talking about another entry sign? Are we talking about street names?
So it's always been a plaque for the existing monument sign for the neighborhood. Be two plaques because it's a two-sided sign or one or whatever, doesn't matter. Or, and then toppers for each of the streets, that's what's been discussed.
So it's the actual street sign inside, it's not the entry sign?
It's both.
Okay.
Do you want a plaque? I'm just, I'm not saying both, I'm just saying those are the ideas. It wouldn't be just, like, talking to plaques for the buildings downtown.
So you couldn't see from your cars, you're driving down.
Yeah, you would, you'd...
Where would the plaques be?
The plaque would just be on the monuments.
On the entry sign?
You tell me how big it is in the house, that would surprise you.
Why?
Can you tell them what you...
And when he goes to talk to the plaque guy, he can...
Yeah, give a price. And then the other part that's been talked about was either replacing the street signs, which would be expensive way to do it. They make toppers, they do a lot in historic districts where they could do that, it'd matter to, you know, six of them or something.
What if Lauton would want one too?
Could do a Lauton too. Lauton would be cheaper.
He said it's a standard sign that could be used at all the...
I think it has to go through the streets too. Dennis always says that there's a hassle with, has to go through the streets department.
Yeah, they have, we have a sign shop.
Right.
We have limitations with their machinery, what they can do. So we do have a new Public Works Director, so I'll bring that forth to him.
There's probably other sources that made the facture.
Yes, right.
It's just it would have to go through, since it's a public right-of-way.
Has to go through public courts.
Public courts.
Yeah, and what policies there may be about street signs.
And the last two, the grant program we talked about, 21 and 20, staff is going to get a meeting with city council. I would like to see if we could get that January, well, January's not realistic, but February, March.
They will be assigned by the mayor and city manager and we will hopefully learn what that date is soon.
Okay. You know, we're absolutely locked into a breakfast meeting.
Are you preferring something else?
I know for me, you know, working, it's difficult to, you know, attend a breakfast. But that might just be my situation. I think we might, and we'll find out more, whatever they do with us, they're going to do with all of councils, all the boards, right? So it's probably some sort of policy decision on the part of the mayor, I want to have all study sessions or I want to have all breakfasts. I mean, they try to make it early in the morning, like 7:30, right? There's advantages and disadvantages. If we have a breakfast, we can't provide a packet of information. We can't give them anything ahead of time. If we have a study session, it can be longer, probably evening, and we can't give them materials. That's what I'm like. Okay. Anything else with the work plan? Thank you, Paul, for looking at that.
21 is probably going to lie.
Pardon?
21 is retired.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we really need that 21 because we have it?
It's 12, same thing.
Oh, it's 12. Anything else? Okay, so...
Good priorities on those last ones.
And Andrea, if you want to give me a drop, I'll see if it matches with my notes. If and when, we talked to city council. We had put together a agenda. It was massaged by staff. And as you remember, it was, the final agenda was some sort of welcome. And then we were going to talk about what we do, COAs, some current projects, Littleton Boulevard, some of our ongoing projects, the grant program, walking tours, meet and greet, historical awareness, design guidelines, some of our future projects, which is basically, you know, the vendor list, tourist drop, swap, alley project, proposing historic district, and then other business, which is this budget or grant. It was very skewed towards show and talent, was very heavy agenda items. As those of you that have been to council meetings before, I think it would be advantageous for us to focus on key topics instead of having a lot of topics. So based on what we talked about here tonight, what do you think would be the topics if they ask us, if we can propose them that we want to discuss with city council? Well, the grant program's one. Right, we all agreed on that one.
Talk about an all-inclusive district.
Pardon? All-inclusive district?
Can we talk about the design standards? The new design standards or no?
I'll pay for the council.
We don't need action from them, the action's already happened.
You know, we don't have an unlimited amount of time with them.
Right.
And those two things are probably, they could generate some discussion. So would we be better served by having a very small number of topics, like maybe two?
You don't go to depth talking about two, but still I'd like to see Littleton Boulevard, just the reaction of city council.
Because that's new. That would be great.
That's new, but it's not meant to be a huge discussion, but just good reaction.
Yeah, kind of a field. I'd like to ask them for budget money, whether it comes out of the grant program or it's separate. A small amount.
And what would we do with budget money?
Plaques. We could have had headphones this fall, summer. A sandwich for a meeting, one or two meetings a year. Maybe money for some sort of community outreach where we provide refreshments. I mean, I'm not talking beer and wine and a caterer, I'm talking lemonade and cookies. An easy up at a table for outreach if we can't get it from the city.
So the city does have a budget, so community development, we have a planning commission from HPB and we have board of adjustment, oh, and board building appeals. And so we do have a budget for that. And so, for example, the joint meeting with HLI, the little dinner that would come out of that is out of that fund. And so I think if you had an outreach and you're looking for cookies and lemonade, we can also pull from that fund as well. And we do have an outreach. I mean, the meet and greets are really an outreach.
But if we wanted to do something special, I mean, I don't know what it might be. So we're looking at the all-inclusive district, the grant program, and Littleton Boulevard?
That's enough.
Yeah. And I would lean away from getting too granular about talking about, you know, budget issues and stuff like that.
We'll just do the three. So in terms of, I've been doing some research on the all-inclusive district. Mike and I have been doing some stuff. Who is going to do the grant program?
Mike.
Mike. And Littleton Boulevard, who is going to work on that?
If the breakfast meeting I may not be able to attend.
There's somebody else that would take on that in terms of, you know, just a status update on what we've done, what we're thinking, what are they thinking about? And maybe putting together, if we have a breakfast meeting, we can't do this, but maybe putting together a position paper that you deliver and then go afterwards. I mean, ideally, we'd like to get it to them ahead of time if we could.
Yeah, I can help with that.
Want to have me help you?
When's the survey, will a survey be out by...
Yeah. Do we just give a status of its progress, right?
I'm guessing so, we'll see. And, you know, as far as, what would we tell council about that?
Do they already know something?
I mean, they probably know more about it than we do, right, Charlie?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't think they're necessarily so dialed into it. We don't know anything about it, at least I really don't.
Do you want to take that off the list or...
I mean, I think it's very, very important, but again, it's just this kind of black box out there that...
I just said mention it and give reactions of council about whether they know about it, if they're interested in it. It's not, we're not looking for a vote, I'm not looking to do a presentation. I just want it brought up.
Some of the new council members, two of them were on the lift board. So they would certainly have some interest in what's happening with Littleton Boulevard, which was a lighted area.
Yeah.
For lift and now is a historic preservation area. So there might be some interest from those council members.
But I think you're right, if we have two, and if we're at a breakfast meeting, we don't have much time.
I'm going to put that third.
I'm not allowed. Interesting to kind of put it out there and, but I think, you know, we would have to like actually learn something about it before we talk to the council.
Well, I think attending that January 24th meeting would be very good because that's where the consultants will be presenting into the community.
Yeah, we really would.
Well, you won't know anything until after the report.
Oh, yeah.
And we haven't scheduled the breakfast meeting yet, right? Just waiting, waiting to get a date. And, you know, we could, if we said, you know, Main Street, non-opt-in district but a mandatory district, I mean, council could say, oh, no way, next.
Right. Or they could say, we think the time is right, it's a good idea, here's what we want you to do and here's your next step.
That would be great.
That's what we would hope because times have changed. And I think... there's more interest in not losing some of our historic buildings, and not worried about those that could be demolished or changed dramatically if they're not in the district, and keeping our character.
No, I mean, there's a lot of, I read someplace that the city had been asked for more building permits or development input than ever in the histories of the city. So, you know, things are happening.
So is every other city in the state, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, and also, we found out about, there's something called the P3 process, and I don't know...
Public-private partnerships?
Pardon?
Oh, it's actually different, and now it's 4P.
What is it called?
This is different than Penta-P, because that's another one, isn't it?
The five Ps?
I don't know if I can remember all the four Ps, but it's like a preliminary plan. So what sometimes, what we've experienced in Littleton is that developers work for many months with the staff on their projects, for example, rezoning, when it gets to the planning commission and city council level, they have perhaps some different ideas about what they thought was appropriate for that site in terms of a rezoning. And so the thought was, well, why don't we offer this opportunity for them to come in before they apply, and they can just get some general feedback in a very unofficial way on their project before they embark on a lengthy process with the city. The idea would be that city council's members would not have to stick with what they said. Certainly, opinions change, but it just gives, gives a little bit of dialogue.
So we don't get it cold, and then after the developer or architect have worked on these very expensive plans, only to be, yeah, this way they have, you know, you could bring it to HPB or Planning Commission, it may not fly, this is our suggestion, some things to consider, so that everybody's working together earlier in the process.
Well, I just clarified that the P3, or P4 it is now, is for a city council only.
Well, what I'm hoping for is that it will trickle down to us. But if they set a precedent and get the process all in place, maybe that can start to be included, especially since we have architects. We're gonna have a couple openings on our board, we're going to be losing a couple of our board members, so if you know of anybody, especially architects, that might be interested, and also people that would maybe be interested in doing some more additional projects, you know, people that have workloads that allow them to volunteer outside the one, you know, meeting a month, which is really the criteria, but we're, we're so excited to be doing more things, and so if somebody has that kind of bandwidth, then... Anything else before we close out the study session?
All-inclusive districts, is that where we get into force designation? Is that what we're talking about?
Mandatory. Mandatory, or instead of opt-in. I think we're the only opt-in in the state.
One of two.
I can't see how they screwed up.
Uh-oh. And Andrea's gonna find out how many districts there are.
But, yeah, that statistic is available.
And how many historic districts are on the state? Because I think if we move forward with this, City Council will have to have a business case on why we should do this. It's not like, oh, HPB thinks it's a good idea because we want more properties in the district, I mean, there's economic reasons, there's a lot of reasons that we are recommending this. And we're also at what we thought is like a supermajority, we have about two-thirds of the property on Main Street in the district, so there is...
What percentage do we have?
Sixty-three.
Oh, okay. Sixty.
It's pretty close to that.
Close.
One more.
I think, though, there's, with the new city council, and we've also had some projects that have come on board, that have gotten the community very involved, they grow mixed use, so I think that people may be more open to this, we'll see, they may not. And also, a lot of the reasons why people did want to join the districts are no longer relevant, like, hours have to be uniform, or furnaces can't be fixed, or insurance rates go up, all that was, did not come to fruition.
And also, that downtown has changed pretty dramatically.
And since the district formed, I got some statistics, the tax base, the tax in the football, but it's mainly, Main Street has tripled. So it's been really good for business, as we well know, I mean, how many people used to come to downtown Littleton as much as they do now?
Has it tripled since the boundary was set?
Since it was formed, 2005. But the, but the stats that I received were for the football. So, but it's from 2005.
2005 information, yeah?
Is that correlative data, or is that causal? Do you know?
It's probably correlation. We'd like to say it's causal, but I don't know, and that includes it.
Sorry, architect, I'll try to speak, try to speak slower.
Pretty pictures here.
But...
I'm just giving Dan a hard time.
Could you give me just a brief, like, where did the all-inclusive district, I haven't seen on the work plan before, I'm just wondering, where did this derive from, a little bit of history?
We have worked over the last couple chairs since before Chuck Reed, so it was before me, it was Margie, and that was Chuck Reed. And even before then, one of the goals of Preservation Board was to get an all-inclusive district. And there was some pushback from the community a long time ago, there was some pushback from City Council that didn't seem to be much of interest. So the strategy was to go and talk to individual property owners and get them to join the district. And there was a variety of reasons why they did want to. Financing or refinancing would be difficult, insurance would go up, operating hours would be dictated, I wouldn't be able to paint my building the same color, some didn't want another layer of government, there was no interest, they were worried about how they would sell their property. So this was kind of the result of these interviews of these property owners, but this was, you know, a couple years ago, and things have changed. So now we're looking at, instead of going to individual property owners, getting people to opt in, to look at it from a more strategic approach.
So instead of 100% participation, it's more of a all-inclusive required?
Change to the code. So if you are in this, on the, if you're building a district, you're part of the district, and you would have to abide by the guidelines, historic guidelines, and you could not demolish your building without approval, you could not build a high-rise, and we're trying to get ahead of the curve before it happens, because something could happen were to destroy our Main Street district. Does that help?
It helps, yes.
So it's always been a priority, it's just, we're looking to shift strategy.
I guess that's where I just wasn't clear on that strategy position at the moment.
Anything else? Want to go ahead and adjourn the meeting? And can you turn off the audio, please?